There's a notification yet?
Now we are.
Alright, so it's called order of all inhalation sessions not called order. All are chivalrous, it's abuse and then squatter.
Reap my ideas to you guys basically go along first our new website went live today. Actually it was legal today and it went live. We've got a few questions about that if it does not come up when first you pull up your browser. Reset your browser, clear your browser, sorry. Clear your browser history, it's a cache issue, so that has taken care of that issue. Letters also have been out informing water and sewer customers of the Service Line Protection Program. Do you have any questions, did we receive any laws or questions?
Yeah, some.
So, we have had a few calls that we've just been ensuring that that's an important that it is a city sponsored program. And finally, Bridge Street demolition of the actual roadway will begin tomorrow. The asphalt supplier for the project has identified a window where they will open their plant and supply asphalt based on letter next week. And we can do the Bridge Street project that will begin demolition tomorrow. And Bridge from Church to Meadow basically will be paved next week. So that will open it up to traffic and parking. It likely will be much like Main Street, it'll be a couple inches below final grade, but it will get that cooling air, so it will look better and to be drivable and accessible. The sidewalks are all open there right now. And that's all I have. Thank you.
No other public comments here. Moving on to four smoking in city parks.
Before, I have a couple of presentations on smoking in city parks. Angela Baker who has an internship with us this summer and fall did the research on this information and is here to present to that.
Hello, I'm also speaking as a member of the smoking in parks and recreational areas. The Board of Alderman has just put staff into more options relating to smoking bans in parks and open spaces. Currently, Smithville has no policy regarding the regulation of tobacco use by the public in indoor or outdoor settings. But there is a resolution that commits tobacco use by city employees, by city property, including indoor facilities, city vehicles, and city parks. Part of my research, I looked at local bans. And the North Kansas City Parks and Recreation Department has a no smoking rule in place for all parks. The no smoking rule in North Kansas City applies to all parks and facilities that are under jurisdiction of the Parks and Recreation Department. Gladstone Parkville, Blue Springs, and currently all have ordinances that prohibit smoking in some form in city parks. And there are fines associated with these ordinances. On the other hand, Savalia also has ordinance with a blind chat. And the North Parks and Recreation Department has a tobacco-free parks policy in place similar to that in North Kansas City. Where it is a policy that is enforced through the Parks and Recreation Department and is more educational based and like they kind of expect the public to police themselves. There's no law enforcement involved in this. When I was researching this, I realized that there are many policy options to consider when designing some of the free places ordinance. The following should be considered. First, what is regulated? What kind of smoking products, just tobacco, e-cigarettes? It's advised to include electronic cigarettes in the ban because of the increased youth access. And what city lands are covered under the policy? Some places include like all parks and recreational facilities, some just include parks. How complete is the smoking ban? Like where is smoking prohibited in the parks and recreation areas? Is it allowed on sidewalks, is it allowed on parking lots? Does the city have the ability to authorize smoking during certain events through board or administrative authorization? Who is the enforcement agency? If it's a Parks Department policy, then enforcement falls to the Parks Department. If it's an ordinance, enforcement should be with the Police Department. Also, compliance procedures need to be considered. Nerd should be silent. Are there running any penalties associated with violating the policy? Is there appeals process? An important piece is community education. It's advised that education should happen early and often. That like sports leagues, since there's one of the main groups that utilize parks and recreational areas, like the policy should be included in local books and policy statements. Should the information be posted on the city website? Should the city website be able to send it out? Would it be beneficial to have a kickoff celebration to help bring awareness to the community about the new policy? And what I've discovered is tobacco regulations in parks and recreational areas vary widely and tailor to fit the needs of the community. And staff is looking for direction from the board on how to proceed with this issue.
Thank you. Alright, first done for discussion, maybe we want to do this as a policy requirements.
I think there's any one of those.
Public service?
Same.
Can I, because we all public areas here. All public areas that are city property? The schooler has, right? Unfortunately, I have the hospital, right? So city parking lot, city parks, senior center. Would you like to designate areas? Just like right up here, we have this corner. Police Department, senior center, and city all kind of areas, so would you want to designate an area or two?
I think it would be, it would be nice to give those a new smoke. At least a place that is their parks as well.
Yeah.
No, doesn't mean I have to go to the park to smoke.
Right.
I'm not a smoker, but I can also see their park and their desire to be part of. If we're going to ban everywhere, at least give them a little space.
Yeah.
So what I'm hearing so far would be an ordinance that would ban smoking in all, on all city parking facilities, public areas, but would provide designated areas in each of those facilities or a number of those would serve identified like this area?
I would say something you figured was probably popular. My personal opinion, if you go to a flavor round area, then I'd be, I'd take action.
And then like Swiss Four, we have that top where the camp area. Like, and then a bit of like healthy park. Do we put a designated area there or anywhere that's within 100 feet of the picnic field? Some of those are more remote. And Swiss Four, have we more citizens ordinance?
Absolutely.
So do we even put a policy in place also to the Parks Department?
That would be, if there's going to be enforcement there, then you could be a parks policy at this point.
So it sounds like we're probably above at this point.
Yeah, and that would be in public areas and that, but in your camp sites? Individual camp sites are those smoke free there as well or in what are the boundaries there? That would be a little more difficult to regulate.
So right now, Swiss Four alcohol is restricted to their individual camp site. We could update the rules to improve the same thing. Is that those are there? And then once it's ordinance good, or once it's a, we can, we can just double it. Because then we might not be visiting there at that point. It's a whole field.
I do like, there's a question for the playground, the community's advocate.
Yeah, right there, I would need a bleachers, shelter houses.
Didn't need anybody talking, you can't do any kind of.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we're talking parks on how we can pass back to recommend, I guess. We've got small parks that are probably not, it's too small to designate an area.
How many, under the Resolution 593, how many are designated some areas do we have?
I don't know that 593 designated, we internally have designated the area out here. Have we, I think we kind of really looked more administrative ways where people could go. Outside of the building or in the building, that's what they, in limited number of areas. So we can, staff speak up and have that especially at the street department, utilities facility, park maintenance area, behind city hall here, that's where we limited that to. Again, those larger areas, we're trying to stay away from most public park. And we can put something together for the board to take a look at that has addressed those issues and thinking about those areas staying away from the shelter houses, staying away from the big tables and the public areas of congregation.
Penalties? Any way of your examples in here?
I'm gonna say any kind of, the best practice or bringing that forward.
Maybe should give it a few months, I think we can start. You know, get time for people to learn about it. Keep warm.
Yeah, get the science out, get some information out.
Sure, that is a lot more difficult work because there's a lot of time to graduation and correction, if we're unfortunate.
Again, we would definitely would just try to do any, any type of public information and education campaign to get information out there even in advance of anything going into effect based on education.
Yeah, I like that we use a letter in Parks Department, they've got pretty good mailings too. And then for reports, complaints, you could just add a public concern.
We can, and I think we think of this being complaint driven as opposed to enforcement. Because it particularly exists in the ordinance, I mean that's a police officer's done this.
Yeah, but activities already have police presence, like Larson's.
When they see that, yeah, absolutely.
They do that enforcement.
Yeah.
I promise the reporting concern is that's not mine, totally corporate.
Right, we wouldn't be able to respond to that. One of the educational items, when you talked about our department mailing list, we as staff also discussed in all of the coaches meetings, have that information for them to be able to share their experience and say, about key information.
And I would just include it, who would you register to do? Put it in private, put it in private information. Easy out, right to do. Feels process would be standard over, right? Kickoff celebration? Sounds good. Figure that out.
I have a question, and also extend to e-cigarettes as well, so it's outstanding.
I would just, to the devices area, I mean.
We'll come up with this broad, broad language as we can. And then, and any one of the, Savalia's language, there is information about, you know, like in a parking, no smoking in city vehicles, but in a parking lot, I don't know if there's anything we can do about that. And the final notes?
Most of the, the best practices.
It's kind of over, these are examples of what there is, so you know, the other things to think about as we're transferring courts to, like county, what will enforcement be there, so.
I do personally, I don't know what I do.
There are, there are fines of $50, there are fines of $500, so, and maybe.
$100 is pretty good.
Yeah, right. Both Carney and Blue Springs are pretty, pretty up there, so those are two practices out there. I don't know if I would determine as best, so that's a board call of 50.
Says not exceeding 500. Somebody else in city also wants to guard, it's probably more.
Yeah. In favor of Stafford, yes?
Does this probably include sidewalks?
Do you go onto the mic, so, so I can hear you?
I got, I got a couple of questions, I was talking, I had here a week or, I don't know. Does, what we're talking about include sidewalks? Do you want to allow for some kind of exception, festivals or something like that based on either action of the board or decision of staff at some level? And what do you want to do about that?
Yeah, I, that's what we said to all, so we advised that I think that covers. I think that covers that one.
That's what I was saying, I recommended that. I think, you may have heard something in the background.
I think for festivals, we could probably add to the application, except if there, there doesn't make.
There may be some kind of cleanup clause written in with it.
Yeah.
Maybe there's a portion of the boss goes for that, it's not cleaned up and taken care of. But I can see that question coming up. Obviously, in the next 12 months, that's just off topic. One here.
Got the 593 sort of announcement here.
Any other second questions, we'll see. Then together, it spans any of the.
Good? Next up is tobacco 21. Do we have a couple here? Couple, couple public comments, so I'll let you hear first.
I prepared another chapter for it about tobacco 21. Ordinances, it's a national initiative that states cities and counties to raise the minimum legal sales age for tobacco products, alternative nicotine products and navel products to 21. As of August 2018, 25 municipalities in the Kansas City area have enacted tobacco 21 ordinances, including Kansas City, Seltzer Springs, Parkville, Liberty, and Gladstone. These ordinances restrict the sales and distribution of tobacco products, alternate tobacco products and navel products to minors under the age of 21. They do not require that communities lower the age should be possessed tobacco products from the current state composed age of 18. And these laws focus on stopping retailers from selling to youth in the first place. They should be designed to place restrictions on retailers and post fines and sanctions if the laws are violated. Currently, Savalia has ordinances, warnings that prohibits the sale and distribution of tobacco products, alternate nicotine products and navel products to minors under the age of 18. The current ordinance can be updated and organized to be consistent with current tobacco 21 ordinances. Tobacco 21 proponents believe that the strongest tobacco 21 policies will contain the following. Clear concise language, specific definitions of tobacco products. A requirement that tobacco written, retailer, retailer posts signage that clearly states the restriction of sales to persons under 21 years of age. An age verification requirement that may suggest the age request identification is 30 years or younger. Mandatory ongoing compliance checks. Design designated enforcement agency and clear enforcement protocol that the penalty is on the retailer, not on the purchaser or sales clerk. And there should be an effective date that allows enough time between the adoption date and effective date to allow for retailer and community education. Based on the new rights tobacco control, legal concerning the attached red line draft was created for board review. Tobacco 21 ordinance filed with the Liberty Ordinance is most consistent with tobacco 21 best practices. The red line draft is filed after this Liberty Ordinance. The following are changes that could be made to refine and strengthen the current smoking ordinance if the minimum legal sales age is increased to 21. Clarify or expand definitions so that there remains a clearer. Reword or eliminate unnecessary language for clarity. Eliminate most of the subsection regarding the sale of tobacco products through vending machines and food provision that prohibits sales through vending machines. Eliminate the provision that allows tobacco retailers to avoid penalties if certain conditions are met. This creates a loophole that gives the impression that it is easy to avoid penalties. Eliminate the language about free samples, which are prohibited by federal law. Remove any purchase views and possession penalties for youth as well as any penalties on the store clerk. Penalty should be imposed on the retailer only. Reword the age verification provision for clarity and increase the age for required ID checks to 30. And include enforcement information which is included in the red line statute.
Steve, Angela's in the audience.
I'm Jenny Chavick, I'm from Missouri, but I work for America's biggest station called the Benty Tobacco Addiction Foundation, and tobacco 21. So we run the National Tobacco 21 Website. And Angela has done a really thorough job of really looking through what communities are doing around here to adopt tobacco 21, so thank you Angela. We met 12 times prior to this. So I want to talk a little bit about why tobacco 21. What we know is that 95% of smokers start before the age of 18. And if they have that first cigarette, the twice the likely to become lifelong smokers before that age. The average of initiation in the state of Missouri is 13 years old. As of the 2018 National Youth Survey, what we know is that 20% of high school kids are using a cigarette. And one in every three high school students are managing tobacco products. For decades, we were making, we do some tobacco use. And over the last couple of years, that, that trajectory has actually changed. And using tobacco at a higher rate than they were before. So we have 3 million kids in the United States right now. This is a jewel device. They own 80% of the e-cigarette market. They came on in January of 2016 and since then, they've become a $10 million company. I'll pass this around, the flavor that is in here, which you need to smell, is mango. Mango is the most popular flavor. It also comes in fruit melody, mint, cool mint, cucumber. And it does come in Virginia tobacco, but Virginia tobacco only accounts for 5% of people's sales. Every kid in the high school can tell you what that device is. So again, we've seen a 78% increase in use from that share of this year of these devices. So the point is that will develop until around age 25. And nicotine is especially receptive to that use rate, it actually changes the structure. The 2018 National Tobacco Control Act gave legal authority to the states and from that state, Missouri gives the authority to local municipalities to raise the sale age. And as Angela said, we've had over 29 jurisdictions in the Kansas City area from the country, or the Indian, Casey metro area, individuals. The first place that passed this was New York, Massachusetts, there's some over Boston, so you could literally walk across the street and be in another community. And what they saw was smoking rates would use by 50%. And the reason why is it just moves that social circle out of the high school. Right now, in the state of Missouri, 80% of our high school seniors are 18 before they graduate. By moving it to 21, we've removed the access point where our middle school and early high school students are getting their tobacco products. We have across the country, 375 local communities that have adopted it and six statewide policies. So it's covering 30% or just shy of a billion people in the United States. We've seen use, use rates decline in communities where we've enacted it. We've also seen access to violation rates decrease. So right now, we have data comes in with compliance checks in Smithville. About one in every five who's that go in and make a buy item are successful in Smithville. At the retailers are starting to be used. So as Angela mentioned, it's really important that you guys are doing some kind of enforcement to make sure that retailers are compliant. And then we put the penalty on the person making a profit off of selling an addictive deadly substance to our youth. By majority, the public supports tobacco 21 and I know across all demographics as far as age, even current, first, indoors, outdoors, national public health organizations, African lung cancer, heart. Our biggest opposition that you can make here in your community is that if you're old enough to go to war, and you're old enough to vote, we should be old enough to buy tobacco products. The military has made strong endorsements for tobacco 21. When Hawaii adopted this statewide, they didn't have to implement tobacco 21 on a federal military basis, but the military basis came on, so we will absolutely be implementing tobacco 21. We want our young men and women serving our country to be free from addiction. And then the other comment is the dollar for the e-cigarette tax. You might have a category, tell them to tell you that they're going to lose revenue if you make them stop selling to you. So 2% sales for 18 to 20 year olds is enough to get them addicted for a lifetime. We also have a gross tax in the nation on tobacco products. We only charge 17 cents a pack and we charge no tax on e-cigarettes. So you're not going to lose tax revenue other than just your sales tax. And then the e-cigarette industry app tells us that this is a cessation device, right? That this will help him quit smoking. But what we know is that for every one adult who transitions from cigarettes to an e-cigarette, we have 80 youth joining into the tobacco nicotine market through these devices. So it's really a gateway for youth to start smoking. The industry has been showing many like today that they are targeting youth with their ads. The average middle school and high school are four out of five will tell you that they saw an e-cigarette active in the last year. So they're definitely marketing to be used. They come in three flavors. And so e-cigarettes are interesting and these, these jewel devices, they have what's called nicotine salts. We know very little about nicotine salts, but they're absorbed more readily and almost mimic a traditional cigarette. But because the nicotine levels aren't quite the same, users transitioning, so if you start using an e-cigarette, you're 7.4 times more likely to go through a traditional combustible cigarette. I'll stop there, because I feel like Angela covered the rest of the policy. But if you would pass this policy today in the city of Smithville, you would save 50 lives of kids in Smithville right now that will become addicted from tobacco products and die of tobacco-related illness by preventing the product initiation.
Thank you. I've got two public comments, so. Go with Kelly first, she can agree to this.
I'm Kelly, we'll see. I'm just supportive, that's really nice to hear.
And next is Jennifer Graves. Do you need a scanner, she never speaks in a public.
I'm Jennifer Graves, I work for High County Mental Health Prevention Department for youth substance use prevention and suicide prevention. And also work to provide technical assistance to the local Smithville community in action. And on behalf of both of those organizations, we show our support to tobacco 21 and the health, we value the health and wellbeing of our youth and of all else.
All of the board, more than one. Well, first of all, thank you for speakers and Angela's excellent job and interview research. I really appreciate it. I am historically against over-regulating and being careful what we do regularly with everything wrong. As a hospital CEO, though, I see the effects of this every single day. This is an addictive thing that catches youth when they're young and it's hard to, hard to catch. I think the way that tobacco 21 is lined out is nicely done in restricting the sales without pushing their up. You know, if it really, if folks really want to go get it, they can figure out where to go get it. But we're going to do our part to make sure that we're going to allow our youth to have, or need to get access to this. I like the way that Liberty has lined out, I like that model, I like that there is some enforcement that does go along with that and the final checks. And I guess we don't get to talk about this this evening.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree. All those compliance checks, it's as well, since we'll do that with other areas. I think it's something we can do in the city as well. And Liberty is a pretty good model to have here. There's a couple of places. There's a couple of places on the red line ordinance where some of them are still in its mind. I think we can start to create those. And then, to cover the things Chief mentioned and, uh, some of the other alternatives expressed is, do we limit it to devices for nicotine containing products or are you just limited to devices? Do you need, uh, something played that doesn't contain nicotine or marijuana or any of those? Because on enforcement, same point, I think there is a lot of that part time. If it's tell me if it's contained tobacco or not, if they're in possession, they're in possession. Chief?
So we're going back and forth on these kinds of baby products?
Yeah. I mean, instead of...
18, 19, now.
Right, instead of saying the product itself.
I think determining, if I'm sorry, if I'm wrong, cross one of these in some like book bag or slate on the desk, I think, being visually determined whether it's nicotine is going to be impossible.
Yeah.
Uh, and that will affect decision-making from that point forward. So I think that, that can be, if we wanted just to, nicotine products, that, that can be a problem. And it's being enforced. I can absolutely tell you, for the last 15, 18 months, I've been hearing about this from SRO, not just high school, middle school.
She says number one.
Particularly middle school, maybe even worse than high school.
She said, I think she said it's number one later on in the conversation.
Yep. It's to the point she's getting calls from parents.
Let me back up one moment. What we're talking about is limiting sale of it. Possession, if they're 18, it's still, still legal.
If they're 18, yeah. Which is the joy of our, the joy of our SRO running to, to...
So, I don't know how this is structured.
Yeah, yeah, it is. Yeah, we've got some separation there. Yeah, it's actually separate, and it probably deals with the under 18.
But, well, are we, this one calls out under 18, but we define baby and adds tobacco to that. It's all within the same ordinance. Do we have separate ordinance for baby products?
No.
It's all within the same, yeah, because it says sections on this baby itself.
Right. This, this...
Yeah, I think defining, I think defining that is yet to where you're actually looking at the under 18 type of device. Because there's nothing that says...
There's a statute that regulates possession under 18. Um, not of e-cigarettes, but tobacco products. So it would probably be something that if you want to address, um...
Beer.
Yeah. And then as far as the, how much, like, is there nicotine, is there not? The CDC study says that 99% of disposable cigarettes, 99.7% of rechargeable cigarettes, and 99% of refillable cigarettes, or e-cigarettes, all contain nicotine. It's going to decline zero nicotine.
Yeah. I agree with some of that, but I think there's coverage here just, even if this is a desert, it's cheese. It's 40 here.
And then it's sure that we have language, and it also mirrors the state statute compared to possession. To move that up to 18 as well. Excuse me if I may take a second.
Possession?
Possession.
No, we, we don't want possession.
No, you... Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. No, it's, it's sale, yes, this is, this is... It's kindergarten. Correct.
You brought up, you said another magic word in this, marijuana. So, you know, I think that's something that we will likely have to tackle. And, you know, frankly, if they have a, they have a prescription for it, they have a prescription for it.
The same kind of, we still, parks and property, if you have a prescription. I mean, for example, schools, you still have to leave school property to administer marijuana, basic prescription. You can't do it just in a parking lot. You have to physically leave the school.
So I, I can definitely go back to the previous discussion on, if there's a, there is only marijuana.
Yeah, right, that's fine. But I just wanted to clarify my...
Thanks, Erica Smith. Um, with the passage of amendment two, marijuana is not to be prescribed by any doctors. It's still federally illegal, so it would be recommended by doctors. Um, so that's an important distinction to make when we're talking about, talking about that, especially this. That's all.
If, one thing I might add as well, we have been approached by the supporters of, or the folks that want amendment two. To, to, thank you, that was passed, with the whole initiative. And we are looking internally at our Sony requirements in the line of work to, to bring information through your office review with regard to marijuana in that way. Um, I think we probably, this discussion may overlap there as well, particularly with regard to some of those provisions and as we have been recommending of, of cannabis with regard to the constitutional amendment as well.
I have a comment, a question. On the one, are we going to purchase use possession penalties for youth and imposing those on retailer only? What about, I'm curious, alcohol now, are they under, if they're in possession, are they, how are they penalized?
For alcohol?
For alcohol.
Alcohol, cited in the order that it's dependent, because it is a, the crime is possession of, of the alcohol.
So I'm kind of, I'm just curious why you would remove that from this.
Yeah, she'll be better off.
So what we know about purchasing and possession laws of tobacco products is they get unfairly put on our minority populations. And also, you can legally purchase the product in other areas. So somebody could, you know, home run, um, another community, having illegally purchased the product, and now they're in violation, not even knowing. So we don't want to criminalize youths for possessing the product.
Erin, do you?
I think so. So any other provisions that staff has to mention?
Not this one.
Or, not this one, I know. And that's, we, we, well, we may, as we craft that language, we may do even further delivery and straight to the board in other work sessions to make sure we have incorporated what you mentioned in the direction. But we're, um, really kind of following that delivery model.
Definitely, we need to move slowly to this standpoint, making sure that we, um...
Education.
Education, yeah.
And you're in front of the paper discussing some strategic issues. Good. Moving on to the next topic tonight, you told your extended trip. You guys can leave if you want to.
I guess, Dan has put together a significant amount of information. All my questions that you all had, um, at our, our last meeting. Some information I was going to, but primarily focusing on normal, um, rates and how they are affected. Um, we also have our representatives from Ractels here answering questions you all might have. I don't know if you might, Angela, but, you know, walk through any of this information or, um, if you have questions.
I love that we have one five eight section here in the entire city.
Have one five eight.
I can hear these for the whole time.
Where is one five eight? Neither.
Five eights and three quarters, the same thing.
So it's the night of the day.
It's the same size.
Yeah, you have to look at the next one.
Okay, I think it's pretty straightforward. I think you obviously spent a lot of time on this, so thank you very much. I honestly didn't really have any questions.
Any other questions?
Well, if there aren't questions that you all have, then I think the thing to, to discuss then is this something that you all do want to move forward with. And if that is the case, um, we've also outlined a, a kind of calendar to be able to put notification in place. State statute requires certification with a 30-day, um, notification period for public hearing. Um, in that period, staff is also proposing that we reach out to those larger water users so that they know the impact that it's changed from having them, as you all know. I meet on a Friday basis with a superintendent, and I kind of wish I had this information, and it was not something that was, um, would be a major issue on our radar screen. So we will have those conversations with other major users. Um, and then what we would do is, is bring, um, the, ensure that we have the notification in the 20th. So, and then be able to, um, include information in our newsletter. And we would put all this information on the website as well and all through social media. So then for late January, public hearing at the work session, you can all play in that format. And then follow up with the ordinances at the actual meetings in February. Uh, we would also need to amend our schedule fees. We would do that in conjunction with the second reading of the ordinance. And if we were to go on a schedule, that would be March 1, a plantation day, which would, would work well through billing process then as well.
Schedule works through. Hold on.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan, to me. All right, moving on to the number seven. I think I've talked here, to be honest, and, uh, all of the club and I have, had figured this information at the park meeting.
Sorry, I was going to catch me a little bit. That's sorry, because people are associated.
That's fine. I'll keep going. All right, so, uh, we had talked to Kate Perdue and his partner on doing sort of, uh, some improvements to our parks around our Indian and Indian landscapes. I sent that information over to the city extension because I've been working with them on bringing 4H to Smithville. Working with Parks Department for nutrition programs and, like, grand families program. We're staying fully under the type county, our Parks Department worshiped a lot of kids and families, so we're going to close that. Uh, I sent that packet over to them. They then presented that at their state conference about a month ago. It's a, this is what Smithville would like to do. And somebody brought up this, because their each program are trying to get going at the end of the year. As you can see at the bottom, they were looking for cities to apply this, get involved. And we're already in that path of doing some programs at town. And they said we would Smithville want to be the first pilot of this. I'd love to, but we're not in the world. Um, they were meeting, you know, Thursday, getting more details on it. But being in a pilot project is not a perfect, but we'll have a fairly dedicated resource here just to help us with the parks improvements. They're going to start in the Wildflower Park for 4H, some landings and stuff. We have a new sidewalk, we're going to cross creek, we're going to pond there. Wildflower Park, we're not sure, it's right across from Indian Heights. It's close enough to Diamond Crest, the new Clay Creek subdivision, Wildflower subdivision, and the new subdivision south of there, plus the long slating and, uh, Parker View are fairly close too. Once we're able to trail them out, they'll only walk a bit, that park, it's about 7.8 acres. But they would look at everything, not just our parks, not just getting a little program with the school, but also working with your organization, the courage stores, the local farmers, everything, anybody to try to back out. We have food deserts, how would you call it, previous local or farm level. I just need to give them a little hint, and let's have a little more. Any questions?
There you go. I think it's great. I have the Wildflower location that they want. Obviously, the new park is just one, that will turn around.
We have three parks that are close to the schools that are under, very, Wildflower, Hop Farm, which is right off of Cable, and then Emerald Park is fairly close to the bigger campus, so. Um, but 4H, the extensions that are starting to work, it would be the highest, Miss Island is in charge of their community garden there. And they're going to do a hot line program at the library, they're working with the school to do that. Hopefully get us further together. Cool, so everybody's good with that, so I'll let you speak.
As we see that, um, move forward, we may have some additional, some special, special notice, some regulations and things like that as the pilot project, there will be a lot of, of questions to be, to be answered as we move through.
So I have one question, Matt, is do we want to protest the Parks Direct to have that kind of work on the board? To block the place of...
So Matt's been working quite a bit, so I think, uh, kind of the wider, I just kind of have Parks Direct to point for this. They're going to supply a lot of resources and people with data analytics from their side of it, so.
I think tools could support it also.
I'm sure, especially it's a part of the...
Yeah, she's very good in it. I mean, she goes to a lot of events, she gets... Yeah, she's, she's a vision artist.
What we learned with those, the pilot programs, I...
Stat, David?
Questions, staff?
I look for the nurse.
Seven, Ed.
All favor of the green, say hi.
Hi, hi.
I'll let you know. Stand here.